Welcome everybody here. Good to see faces on a night like this with a little bit of storminess out there. If we would just pause for a moment of silence before we start the meeting. I'm in. Commissioners, you've seen the agenda for the forum. You'll have a motion to adopt the agendas presented. Have a motion from Commissioner Fouchet to have a second.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Otto, any discussion and our questions. All those in favor of adopting the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The floor is now open for public comment.
Philip Arnold, 530 Gil Drive. As a member of the Audit Committee, could I just ask where we are with the hiring of a financial officer?
Yes, sir. Mr. Arnold, thank you for that question at the seven o'clock. Yes, sir. An offer has been made and accepted, and the young lady has been working part-time for the town for a little over a month now doing some of her bank reconciliations and other accounting work for the town, and she will begin on February 1st, and I hope that she'll be here tonight. I'm expected to see her to make a formal introduction.
Would she make a report based on the financials she's been working?
We have delivered a financial report for the council consideration tonight in part of their agenda packet, but she will not be making any formal statement. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Actually, Tom gave me one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mary Standard of Montreat. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you as council members and also to the general Montreat community. And I speak to you tonight over something which you don't have a direct authority, but I wanted to speak to the community regarding some of the historical aspects of this place that we love. There are buildings which are special, and there are buildings which are both special and sacred. The Basilica of St. Lawrence with this Guastavino elliptical dome is one of these sacred spaces. Montreat has its own building, which is both special and is sacred. It is Montreat College's Gaither Hall, which contains Gaither Graham Chapel. It was built in the 1930s. The funds were donated solely by Sadie Gaither Anderson in honor of her parents. She was their only surviving child. He had made his fortune in Charlotte real estate. They had no other children. And Sadie Gaither Anderson was the wife of Robert C. Campbell Anderson, who was the president of Montreat College and Montreat Retreat Association for more than 37 years. This couple, too, had no children of their own, and their life and their legacy and their fortune were left to the development of this place that we call Montreat. Dr. Anderson designed and built Gaither Hall utilizing the native Montreat chestnut, which had been killed by the chestnut blight of the 1930s. Chestnuts once provided 50% of the tree canopy of the Montreat Cove. Dr. Anderson used the cove chestnut to panel the ceiling of Gaither Chapel and to build his pews. Generations have worshipped in this irreplaceable place of great beauty and history. Generations have spent their time there in worship, in study, in community, and Presbyterians have worshipped there for over 80 years. Recently, it has learned that the college plans to remove chestnut pews and replace them with more flexible seating. Hopefully, the college will reevaluate this decision. To paraphrase Dr. Maurer at his November meeting, "Montreat is a magical place, and part of the Montreat experience is in its buildings of chestnut and stone." Many have worshipped. Many have married in this chapel, strengthening their support for Montreat College. The chestnut pews in the chapels should remain. This place is special. The pews are irreplaceable. The space is sacred. The chestnut pews are integral to the Montreat experience. Again, hopefully, the college will take an opportunity to reevaluate their decision to remove the truly irreplaceable chestnut pews, which are part of the spirit and purpose of all that makes Montreat a special place. The college does indeed own the building, and it can indeed do as it wishes with the pews. The current administration hopefully will realize that they are not only the owners of the building, but are caretakers for the present generation and future generations for this wonderful space. The pews should stay, and for those in the community who have an opinion, either for keeping the pews or having the pews replaced, I would urge you to reach out to the college trustees and boards and the college administration and to make your views known. And again, I thank you for the opportunity to share with the larger Montreat community. Thank you.
Anyone else? Philip, you and Mary were the first ones to speak from the Tom Widmer podium. Tom built that and brought it to the town hall. And I meant to recognize him earlier, and then I realized that both of y'all were using it and rather obvious that it's something new in the building.
Well, thank you, Mary. And I was going to, but quite frankly, I wasn't sure that it was really steady, and I wanted to see how it worked before I put a final statement.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn until seven o'clock. Have a motion.
So moved.
Two motions, one to have a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned until seven o'clock at our regular meeting.
So stand for a moment, bow our heads before we start meeting. I'm in. Commissioners, you've seen the agenda. They'll have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I move to adopt the agenda.
I have a motion from Commissioner Alexander. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Widmer. Discussion and our questions. All those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
The agenda adopted. Only communication is I want to thank some people out there. You know, Margaret Bauer and Lynn Gillan and Lolly Hightower, Kelvin and Nikki Otto. Spent a lot of time decorating our community and putting garlands around it, the railing at the lake, and I thought it looked so nice. And I just want to express our appreciation to them. And I want to thank Mayor Pro Tem Whitmer, Mayor Pro Tem Blake, for his recent coordinating and getting us to talk to all of our county commissioners with the exception of one, well, really two right now. And we've been lobbying for money and trying to get them to give us some funds to maybe help us with the bridge as we go along. But really do appreciate that. It's very important that we're involved and know who our county commissioners are, and they know who we are. And that we do appreciate them and do need their help from time to time. You want to cover the consent agenda? Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City staff would ask that the council consider the adoption of the consent agenda as presented to the commission.
May I ask, the December eighth town council meeting minutes are on the agenda for adoption, but we don't have them. Okay. I'm sorry, I missed that.
I have one, one correction for the December eighth town council meeting minutes. On the last line of paragraph H, H is in horse, under new business, we need to delete the word carried and insert in its place the words was defeated.
Any other changes and or additions? Have a motion to accept the minutes then with the change.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second. Have a second, Commissioner Fouchet. All those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Normally, minutes are adopted when we do the consent agenda, but with the amendment, we've got to make sure that they are properly entered into the record. Administrative reports, commissioners, you've received the administration report, the planning and zoning report, police, public works and water, sanitation and streets. There any questions on any of those of staff? Hearing none. Floor's open for public comment.
Mary Standard, Montry. During the public forum, I spoke to the issue of the pews being removed from Gaither Chapel and Gaithen Hall and the importance of these pews to the history of Montry, the college and the town and its inhabitants. During the recess between the public forum and this current town meeting, I was informed that to the best of this individual's knowledge, that the pews have already been removed and that they're being sold. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one stand up, we'll move on. Under new business, we have no old business. Under new business, presentation of a wellhead protection certification of achievement, Jordan Jackson. Don't let it carry you. Just get up close to it.
Okay. And the town of Montry updated their wellhead protection plan this year. And we just, the wellhead protection plan is not mandatory from the state. So we just want to congratulate the town for going through that process to update the plan and get it approved by the state. So we have this important.
Jared, thank you for going through that. We appreciate it. Thank y'all. Thanks so much. Good work, Jared. Did a good job too, Jordan. Item B is consideration of designation of a voting delegate for the 2023-24 North Carolina League of Municipalities.
I'd like to move that Mayor Helms, that you be appointed as our representative to place that vote.
I second that motion.
Have a motion, have a second. Any further discussion and or questions? Plan to work with the, with our town manager to look at the voting agenda for League of Municipalities and cast our vote accordingly. All those in favor of the motion signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes carry. Item C, consideration of updating signature authority on Town of Montry bank accounts and trust, at Truist Bank, I'm sorry. Ben?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, commissioners, this is just some housekeeping. In behalf of the town staff, we just asked that the signatory cards be updated to reflect the current signatures.
Okay, I see where it's going to be Angie, Ben, David Aaron, myself, Kitty Fouchet on those accounts. That's pretty much the way it's been, but just, right, okay. They'll have a motion.
I move to appoint town clerk Angie Murphy, interim town manager Ben Blackburn, police chief David Aaron, mayor Tim Helms, and commissioner Kitty Uche to have signature authority on the Town of Montry's bank accounts at Truist Bank.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, Commissioner Widmer. Discussion and our questions. All those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
We enter a second period of public comment. Anyone? One time. Okay. Commissioners communication, any communication?
I have some, a few communications. First, I wanted the commission to know that the Bearwise Committee, the Land Use Committee has been busy. Arrington Cox has been doing a good job. We've had meetings with the, with the state and hope to be designated as Bearwise Community in several months. As part of that, we're going to have, I'm going to be bringing next month, a proposal for minor revisions to our trash disposal sanitary sewer disposal, not sanitary sewer, or trash disposal ordinance. Basically, putting in more detail as well as more flexibility with respect to the type of trash receptacles that are permissible as well as the cages or in which receptacles are built to incorporate a number of standards that the state believes are necessary to make the those containers bear proof. But again, it will give residents more flexibility. And essentially, there are several aspects of our current ordinance that just aren't enforced. So I think this will be an improvement on our existing ordinance. I'll get drafts out to the commission as soon as possible so that they'll have plenty of time to look at it between now and this time next month. The second thing I'd like to mention is, you know, we just talked about the North Carolina League of Municipalities goals for this legislative session. The League of Municipalities also has a town and state dinner. The town and state dinner this year for this legislative session will be held on February the 22nd. And I would like for the, this commission to, as many of us as possible to make reservations to attend that and, and visit with our state, members of our state legislative delegation at that same time, maybe go up for a day and a half, two days, meet with a legislative delegation as well as attend that dinner. I think that would be very helpful. The third thing I'd like to mention is to thank Barry Creason and the Public Works staff for the excellent job they did in installing signage and boulders along Appalachian Way where the, where college student friends were trying to create their own parking lot slash mudslide area. So it's, it's, it's under control now and I'm greatly appreciative. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thanks, Mason. Any other commissioner have any communication?
Mr. Mayor, I do. I would just like to announce, and we'll put this into the Montry minute, that the Metropolitan Planning Organization for our area through, that is responsible for transportation primarily, roads. They have every year an update to their, their transportation improvement plan. It is a 10-year plan that goes from 2024 to 2033. And they have just drafted that and they have a public survey that if anyone would like to take a look at that draft plan and answer a survey about what your desires are, they would really appreciate public input. It's, I'll be honest with you, when I first got on that board, I didn't understand the importance of the work of that MPO. But most of the money that comes over to this part of the state for transportation goes through that board. So public input is really important for funding for I-26, for example, or defunding of I-26, depending on your way of thinking. So take, take the time to take a look at that. The second thing that I'd like to do is thank Public Works. I was walking down Tennessee, I'm sorry, Texas Road, not extension, the spur there, and I saw something you do not see very often in Montry, two new signs. Caution, children playing. So they have put up two new signs in that area because we've got a couple of families in that area with young children, and it's a great, great thing to see, and thanks to Public Works for doing that.
Thank you, Tom. Any other commissioner have any communication tonight? Okay. Dates to remember, the Comprehensive Planning Steering Committee meets tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. Town Hall. Town offices are closed this coming Monday on the 16th in service of the Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday. Sanitation services will resume on the 17th, which is Wednesday, excuse me. Planning and zoning commission Thursday, January the 19th at 10:30 in Town Hall. Tree Board Tuesday, January the 24th, 9:30 a.m. Town Hall. Board of Adjustment Thursday, January 26th at 5:00 p.m. at Town Hall. Land Care Wednesday, February 1st, 9:00 a.m. here at Town Hall. Bridge Aesthetics Committee meeting Thursday, February the 9th at 2:00 p.m. here at Town Hall. February Town Council Meeting Thursday, February the 9th at 7:00 p.m. in Town Hall. Public Forum begins at 6:30. You know, it's so nice to be able to say all these meetings are in Town Hall instead of this building and that building and through Montry, it's a little repetitive, but they're all here. Need to go into closed session? Oh. Yeah, Ben, would you introduce our bookkeeper, our lady?
Yes, sir. Our finance director that will be coming on board February 1st, Rachel Addings. She's been working with the town for a little over a month now. They're doing some of the bank work and accounting work and for the town. And we're really pleased to have her on board and she's done a great job. And we're really pleased and welcome her as part of the Town of Montry team. Thank you.
Hey, what she and Angie did already, I guess about a month ago now, maybe a little longer than that, I got an email at the house and the folks saying our Powell Bill report was due in, in, you know, in a couple of days. They had, or a couple of weeks really, and they hadn't had, didn't have any indication we were sending it in. So I called Angie and Ben and Lord have mercy, they all came in here and she made a few phone calls, didn't you? To our former financial director and, and got it right the first time. And our former financial director says that never has happened, to expect months to end up the thing right the first time. And she did it with Angie's help and Ben's help, right out of the gate. Thank you so much. Entertain a motion to go into.
My understanding, we got the money. We've gotten the money, or this allotment from the Powell Bill. So that speaks really well.
Well, good. Barry, don't spend it all in one place.
I would also add, Mayor Commissioners and, and members of the Montry community, I would like to also thank our Public Works Department. There was some concerns about dog waste. And our Public Works Department just recently put in two dog stations as well as some signage. So in and around some of our parks areas, so.
Thank you. I get one of those little bags every now and then in my bear-proof can, but that's all right. I take care of it. I need a motion to go into exactly session. Personnel matter.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we enter into closed session in accordance with NCGS 143-318.116 for discussion of the personnel matter.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Alexander. All those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes carry. We're adjourned into exec, commit close.